Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Pawtucket School Committee Regular Meeting on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Ms. List, please take a roll call.
Ms. Benolo, Ms. Carney, Mr. Shalal, Ms. Doobie, Ms. Fernandez, Ms. Grant, Mr. Chavino.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Special Report of the Student Representatives. Anyone here from Tolman? I'm sorry, Shea High School first.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Glanera Santos, and I am a senior at Shea, and these are Shea happenings. To begin with, these are some senior events that are already set in place. Senior Dinner will take place May 9th, Senior Prom, May 31st, Honors Night, May 22nd, and Senior Trip, 23rd. And to add on to that, I would really like to thank you guys for your generous donation for our senior trip. This just made our trip more accessible to our students, and we're really grateful on behalf of the class of 2024. On the Shea Fashion Show is set for May 4th. We're working on getting there. Some seniors are caps and gowns, and making sure everyone's on the right path to graduate. Signups for spring sports have already begun. Representatives from different programs and opportunities have visited our students. We'll be holding exams for the SEAL by literacy soon. There will be a blood drive at Shea, April 3rd, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the auditorium. ASVAB testing for seniors and juniors will be taking place this Friday. Key Club continues to work hard in our current league, working on making blankets for those who are homeless and underprivileged. We would like to congratulate the cheerleading team for coming in first place for the second year in a row on Saturday in the Division One Ohio State Championship. Great job, ladies, for our fantastic season. And lastly, congratulations to Unified Basketball Team on their win against Juanita Sanchez last night. It was a total team effort as everyone scored for the Shea Raiders. The final score was Shea 55 and Juanita Sanchez 47. Thank you all, and have a great night.
Do we have our representative from Tolman High? Okay. How about Jaclyn Walsh?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Souza, and I'm a senior visual art major at Jaclyn and Walsh School for the Arts. Our prom committee held an ongoing calendar fundraiser, and we sold over 500. We are so grateful for all the local businesses who supported us, and we are very excited about prom coming up in May. Our art students have been working closely with Art League Rhode Island, learning more about galleries, and also getting ready for our own collaborative show with them in April. Our mock trial team had a strong season that unfortunately came to an end after facing Wheeler on February 28th. We put up a good fight and look forward to seeing what the team can accomplish next year. Last week, Senior Gillian Gagden participated in the district's Women's Day event and had a great time speaking with legislators and conversing with the women from Shea and Tolman. At the start of last week, we also held auditions for a senior-led cab parade that will feature students from all grades and majors. We are gearing up for a very busy spring. Tomorrow, our dance and music students will attend a performance put on by First Works, and on Friday, our dancers will attend a performance by Rhode Island Ballet. Our TriM Music Society will hold an Ice Cream, You Scream, Ice Cream karaoke event on Thursday next week. Next Thursday, our theater majors are all attending a show at the GAM, and on March 27th, we have our chorus going to the ACDA Choral Festival. I look forward to sharing more about all these events and more next month. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we will move to public participation. Ms. Usher.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Usher, and I am a Pawtucket resident. My husband and I both went to school here, and we both graduated from Tolman High School. My children both attended public school here. I have one son who graduated from Tolman and a daughter who graduated from JMW. I am Pawtucket proud. With that said, it is becoming increasingly difficult to find ways to continue to be Pawtucket proud. We are failing our kids. So I'm just going to backtrack for one second and just say that I have been involved in a multitude of professional development. Not only am I involved in it, I deliver it. Some were delivered by the district, some by the union, some of my own findings, some by the national unions. And with that said, I've changed my strategies, my approaches, as well as the general flow of my teaching. I have made sure to evolve and make both personal and professional growth as all of the systemic problems changed around me. I'm a trauma-informed educator as well as a trainer. I am SEL-trained, and I have taken every year of teaching as a learning experience. I have a deep bag of tricks and strategies to assure that all of my kids, yes, we call them our kids, can succeed and grow both academically, socially, and on a personal level. With each passing school year, my bag of tricks seems to be not quite enough. As a result, I read more books, I attend more PDs, and I connect with more of my colleagues. So the descriptors I mentioned here are not exclusive to myself. Ninety-nine percent of our teachers are working this hard, and we are still treading water. As I begin to reflect on the changes I have made, I realize that our district may not be putting forth the same effort. We, as a school district, are failing our kids. As Mr. Lancelotti mentioned, the students who have the hardest time regulating themselves through the day in high school are these same students who were struggling in elementary settings and middle school settings. What changes can be made for these students? What safety nets can we put in place to catch them before they fall? More importantly, what are we doing for our students who are ready to learn but cannot due to those who aren't able to or willing to? We need to put tremendous focus on both sets of our students. The answers cannot continue to lie on the shoulders of our teachers. We are exhausted. I challenge you, the school committee, to find a creative solution that works for our district, our students, and our teachers. Can everyone come together to do what is best for all of our students? And let's commit to becoming the example instead of a continued statistic. Thank you.
Ms. Broschel.
Good evening. My name is Karen Broschel-Meda. I'm a sixth-grade math teacher at Goff. This is my 28th year in the classroom. I also spent four and a half years as a substitute in this city. I'm Pawtucket born and bred. I attended J.C. Potter, not Potter Burns, Goff and Tolman. I love this city with all my heart, and I am proud to serve as a teacher in these schools. However, this school year has been particularly challenging. My team and I have a combined 120 years of experience, and we are struggling to keep up with the challenges that we are facing at Goff every single day. According to the student handbook, "The school committee recognizes that acceptable behavior is essential for the development of responsible and self-disciplined citizens and for the provision of an effective school program. Positive behavior is based on respect for oneself, excuse me, and for the worth and human dignity of others. Development of such positive behavior in students is a dual function of the home and the school. In order to fulfill the responsibility of the school, it is necessary that each learning activity contributes positively to the creation and maintenance of a climate that is conducive to learning. All professional staff members have responsibility for consistency in establishing and maintaining an appropriate behavioral atmosphere. A minority of the students at Goff have a lack of respect toward all adults in the building, including faculty, staff, and visitors. They do not have boundaries and feel it is appropriate to speak their mind when the spirit moves them. They question authority and, in some cases, ignore it altogether. They leave the classroom when they feel like it to do what they want. On my team, we have two significant behavior problems that don't allow the classroom teachers to teach the rest of the class. These students are disruptive, to the point of making both racial and sexual comments and gestures to others in the room. The rest of the class is exhausted because they deal with these disruptions all day, to the point where some of the students are finding it easier to give in and join the disruptive crowd rather than fight for their right to an education. The teachers are exhausted from having to deal with these behaviors and then have to stop class to write up a discipline form, which causes the remainder of the class to lose precious learning time because of one or two students, and all of us are frustrated. We have been to countless meetings every week about these students. We have been collecting data on these students since the day they entered our classrooms. We have requested meetings with administration from downtown. There has been one occasion that an administrator came for a meeting. However, our team of teachers was neither invited nor alerted. We feel as though our requests are falling upon deaf ears. We, the teachers at Goff, are doing our best every single day, but as studies have shown, verbal abuse takes its toll after a period of time. Our administrators at Goff are also doing their best. However, they are receiving instructions from above. They are no longer allowed to suspend students for their behavior. They have been told that they are no longer outside placements, sorry, that there are no longer outside placements for these behaviors. They are struggling, like the rest of us, to maintain order and a code of conduct that is written in the student handbook. None of those rules seem to pertain to students anymore. The motto at the top of the Pawtucket School Department webpage says, "Together, Every Student, Every Day." I can wholeheartedly say that not all students are receiving the education that they deserve. The teachers are not receiving the kind of support they need, and the administrators are trying to meet the needs of all, but failing. It takes a village to raise a child. We want our students to learn. We want our students to be successful. We want them to aspire to and achieve their dreams, and we're begging you for your help to make our village strong. Please help every child every day.
Mr. Pompelli.
Thank you, Chairman Chavino. There was discussion at the city council meeting last week regarding the value engineering report for the new Baldwin Elementary School. As Councilman Gregor is concerned, the Woodlawn community is not getting the entire project they were promised. Term in on budget, as shown in the report, nearly $2 million in improvements have been sheltered, reduced, including the quality and aesthetics of materials, reducing the number of dryer raceboards by 25%, reducing the number of basketball hoops from six to two, and the replacement of a full kitchen with only a warming kitchen. Justification of industry standard, as reported in the VE's report, to me communicates bare minimum. This isn't during design. This is while the project's in construction. At the last work session, the school committee approved an RFP to hire a construction manager at risk whose job it will be to do similar value engineering to ensure the Unified High School project budget does not exceed $330 million available. Which of the promises of the Unified High School will we be willing to compromise to address inevitable cost escalation? The city of Warwick, facing similar challenges with its new $350 million high school, proposed to replace Tulge and Pilgrim, cut air conditioning, and the size of collaborative spaces. The town of North Providence was forced to combine two elementary schools when their construction estimate jumped by 20% when they entered Stage Three. As we enter Stage Three for the Unified High School, which will begin to answer technical feasibility questions left over from Stage Two, and hopefully will start looking at real-world construction costs, I would urge the school committee to facilitate meaningful public dialogue with the OPM and their consultants at community workshops as we progress with the most expensive public building project in the city's history. In addition, one piece of the Unified High School feasibility puzzle is the city's Land and Water Conservation Fund conversion application to National Park Service to allow development on what was previously the McCoy Annex recreational facility. The city's application proposes a new Riverside Park on Pleasant Street in Oak Hill on the presently undeveloped portion of Riverside Cemetery, essentially leveling this undeveloped land to provide additional playing fields next to Max Reed Field to atone for the development of McCoy Annex, a portion of Donald Park adjacent to Prospect Heights, and Morley Field in the Woodlawn neighborhood. Among the city's justification in the application for removing scarce green space from environmental justice communities and replacing it with new fields in an area not lacking for recreational space is the city's plan to relocate Slater Middle School into the Shea High School building. As follows in the application, "When the new citywide combined high school is completed, Shea High School will be reused as a middle school and will be approximately .25 miles from the proposed Riverside Park. The proximity of the middle school to this new resource will lead to usage of the park, an opportunity that does not exist at Morley Field. Aside from the absurdity of the idea that children should have recreational space near where they attend middle school and not where they live, it's my understanding there are no concrete plans to move Slater into the Shea building aside from preliminary master planning, long-term discussion. This is not the only fact-challenged claim in the application, and 184 comment letters were received in opposition to the conversion application. As the failure of this conversion would affect the ability of the city to develop the Unified High School, I once again urge the school committee to consider alternatives, including renovation of our existing high school buildings, and again, delay any demolition of the stadium until this and other technical and budgetary feasibility questions are fully resolved." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pompelli. All right, we will move to recognition. Superintendent. Student Leadership Award.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. I am genuinely delighted to stand before you today. Feel kind of awkward facing the audience. Kind of odd. I just have to interject my speech that I wrote, just to say that I met her last Friday, and she is like a ray of sunshine. She is just like an awesome, awesome. Your parents would be very proud. Mom, there they are. Very proud. Okay, I'll try to stay focused on my speech. But I'm very genuinely delighted to stand before you today to congratulate Fatamata Berry for receiving the Exceptional Student Leader Award at the Black History Month Impact Awards Ceremony. This recognition is a testament to Fatamata's remarkable leadership, dedication, and her positivity and the impact that she has on our community. Fatamata, your unwavering commitment to making a difference has gone unnoticed. Even when I was standing in the hallways, the kids were walking up to her, "Hey, hey," like you are just a ray of sunshine. Through your exemplary leadership, you have inspired and empowered those all around you. It is fitting that you have been honored by Mayor Grivian and our community members. In her teacher's words, she embodies resilience, intelligence, and leadership while effortlessly balancing academics, extracurriculars, and community service commitments. Your resilience, determination, and compassion exemplifies the value that we hold dear, and we are immensely proud to celebrate your achievements today. As we gather to recognize your outstanding accomplishment, and I'm going to have everybody stand and give you a huge round of applause, okay? Let us also reflect on the significance of Black History Month. We celebrate you, Black individuals, achievements, and contributions throughout history and honor their legacy of resilience, perseverance, and triumphs over adversity. Fatamata, your leadership serves as a shining example of the impact one can make when driven by a sense of purpose and a commitment to positive change. On behalf of the entire Pawtucket School Department family, I extend my warmest congratulation to you. May this award remind you of the incredible impact you have had and the bright future that lies ahead of you. We are honored to celebrate your achievements, and today look forward to witnessing your continued success. Thank you for all that you are, will be, and excited for you this evening. Let's stand up and give a round of applause, everyone.
I would just like to thank everybody that has raised me, been in my life, through my life. I was very young when I moved here, and I can definitely say that Pawtucket is a great place to move from, to move to after living in, after living in New York for a year. And I am greatly proud of this award, and thank you very much.
Right, we had two other recognitions, but both of those have been moved to the work session because they're both currently playing games. All right. All right, we'll go to the presentation of award for Henry J. Winter's Elementary School Design.
Hi, everybody. Kathy El Thorpe from Slam Collaborative.
Mark Rhodes from Slam Collaborative as well. Good to see you again.
So we wanted to thank you for letting us come and share some really great news on Winters. We have been able to get or to submit the project. I'm going to put this in front. We submitted the project for two different awards and won both of them. And we've got a few more that we're going after, so maybe we'll be able to come back and give you some more. But these awards, one of them is architecturally based. It's the AIA, the American Institute of Architects, Rhode Island. That's the one I was carrying this in front. The other one is from a learning group. It's the Learning by Design Environmental Group. And so we've been juried by architectural people and a combination of architects and educational people. Now I'll let Mark tell you a little bit about the jury process.
Yeah, so the jury process, Kathy's a little shorter than I am. The jury process is an interesting one. The second award, which is this one, so I will put kind of next to. We do have, we are waiting for the wood plaque to come, so that is coming. That's just an example of what it might look like from the award. That's a national award by a national jury. National juries, architects, and educators from across the country. It was very interesting in there, that was the highest honor given. It was highest honor given to an elementary school. It usually goes to a high school, but for an elementary school, it was really exceptional. They, in their quote, couple quotes from the jury, "Not only this project scored super high across all seven judging criteria, it was also highly regarded by the jury amongst other award projects entered. Based on a juror's broader educational design industry knowledge, they looked at Henry J. Winter School as a benchmark for other architects and educators to learn from." We're also giving a tour as part of a ALUP, which is a national organization as well, coming up in a couple weeks, so we're excited about that. So congratulations to you, your leadership led to this. Thank you.
Should we leave them? We can have a box.
I, you know, it was, it's certainly been, that project was certainly no small feat. And, and your expertise, your guidance throughout, it plays a part in the awards that we all share in collectively as a team. I remember in the early, early stages, when I think we were meeting on Zoom and Mark brought us for a fly-through of what the school would, and it just, it wowed everybody. You guys delivered what you said you would, and for that, we're grateful. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we are going to adjourn to executive session. I'll entertain a motion to do so. Motion by Ms. Doobie to adjourn to executive session for, in accordance with the provisions under Rhode Island General Law, 4246-5, for the purpose of discussing acting upon Pawtucket Police Department, Pawtucket School Department, School Resource Officer, School Security Measure MOU. Motion's been made by Ms. Doobie, seconded by Ms. Benolo and Ms. Grant. Any discussion on the adjournment to executive session? Roll call on that, please.
Ms. Benolo, Ms. Carney, Mr. Shalal, Ms. Doobie, Ms. Fernandez, Ms. Grant, Mr. Chavino.
Yes. All right, we will be in executive session. Convene an open session at 7:20 PM. Ms. List, please take a roll call.
Ms. Benolo. Ms. Carney, Mr. Shalal, Ms. Doobie, Ms. Fernandez, Ms. Grant, Mr. Chavino.
Here. Ms. List, please report out the votes of the executive session.
The committee voted unanimously to table the first executive session agenda item, the Pawtucket Police Department and Pawtucket School Department, School Resource Officer and School Security Measures MOU to fill the executive session minutes and to adjourn the executive session.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to approval of previous meeting minutes from 2:15:24. Motion to approve the minutes of 2:15:24 by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Grant. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will pass on New Business Discussion Action Item A, which was the executive session item that's been tabled, and we'll go to Flora Curtis, Virginia Cunningham Elementary School Playground Site Review. Assistant Superintendent Reames.
Good evening. I have just the pleasure of introducing the, Tim, from Garrish and Gianna for the presentation of the Virginia Cunningham Playground site that you approved the equipment for in a previous meeting. So they're going to show you now the layout of the design. For the record, if I said Curtis and Cunningham, I meant just Cunningham as indicated on the agenda. Oh, Curtis and Cunningham. It's Curtis and Cunningham. Did I say it? I said it right.
So good evening. Again, we're coming for part two. We presented the playground equipment. Now we're presenting the site plan that will go to ride for the completion of the whole project.
I just mentioned that we presented the playground equipment for both Curtis and Cunningham within the last two school committee meetings, and we're coming now as a part two for the playgrounds, and we're just going over quickly the, over the site plan. Tim from Gardner and Garrish will take over.
Thank you, Gianna. You've seen these images prior, but we were focusing on the playground equipment. So this is a sketch-up model. I can show you plans, but I think that it gets blurry and hard to read, especially from where you are, so I think this is easier. Curtis is a fairly flat site, so there's no ADA issues or issues to try to tackle. Most of it is based on positioning of the playground equipment, of course, and the poured-in-place surfacing. You can see the color variations that we've worked with the school committee on, a lot of fun, a lot of good discussion. And that's the majority of the playground site work is about poured-in-place. There's a little bit of asphalt removal, there's a little bit of tree planting. If I can do those of the existing trees, sorry. Over here on the right, there'll be some proposed trees that are being added to help with sun and interest with kids. And actually, the last picture, quickly over, yes. There's trees on the, this is the main concrete walk coming in from the parking lot on that side to the school building, the entry door. Oops, sorry. Entry door here. And so we're going to plant trees on the western side of that, one to help shape playground in a few years, but that will help in the long term. There will also be a bench or two or three, if I'm not mistaken, and a trash receptacle. We're working on finalizing which ones exactly. Probably similar to Cunningham, which you probably will see. And there's discussion of a bike rack, because there is one, and maybe where it's going to go. But that's the, that's the gist of the site. But that's the, that's the gist of the site, uh, improvements at Curtis.
Any questions? All right, we'll go to Cunningham.
Okay, uh, Cunningham Site Improvements. Um, if you're familiar with the, with the site conditions at Cunningham, there's a lot more work to be done. There's some existing retaining walls, uh, a lot of, uh, bare soils, some stormwater issues, the tackle, uh, guardrail in some places. So you're familiar with the playground equipment. Um, you, you haven't seen this model, this set, but it's the same playground equipment that we approved at the, at the last meeting. So again, um, though this shows it being fairly flat, it's, we're going to create the site to be fairly flat, so everything's accessible to be able to move around uh, very easily. Again, we've created these, this form and function of the, of the ported-in-place. It's actually a circular form, uh, reminiscent of the, of the wheel that's the Pawtucket, uh, logo, which is very industrial, so. So, uh, part of it will be asphalt with a path that connects from the, uh, from over where the kindergarten kid through and over. And, uh, this is a view from where you're walking in near the cafeteria out through. So you'll have some trees that are, that are planted right along the edge there. Uh, it's open. This is a view actually from one of the doors looking out. Um, so you can see some trees on the other side. Again, there's a couple benches. That's not one we chose, but there's three benches within the, within the, uh, playground. Uh, this is actually the bench and the trash barrel blue. Then the color we chose. Uh, and then this green, uh, color down here is actually a plexa paved material, which we used at cutting, uh, at curvins, thank you, uh, which is the porous material for the, for a, a great cover for the trees. It's made out of hundred percent rubber, so kids can play and run on it, not gonna get hurt, and allows water to infiltrate to get to the, into the trees. Uh, and this is one of the great views coming out from, um, door number five, I think, five or six, right along the existing stone wall. So you can see how the kids can run out from the playground, um, turning a little bit to the right. There is some slope that we're going to work with on this side. Existing sewer and that's looking back to the east and kind of an overall. So a couple benches, uh, trash receptacle and ported-place material.
Any questions on Cunningham, Ms. Doobie?
Um, so I know when we've done projects in the past, uh, with trees and with other shrubbery, there's usually some kind of, you know, warranty where if, you know, after a year it doesn't flower, it doesn't, you know, that it's replanted. And is that the same thing that we would, we would see here?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, contractors responsible for maintenance in a year or two.
Okay.
So I'm gonna expect that, we're gonna expect that, it's gonna be water, fertilize, et cetera.
Okay.
And Tim, are you, how are you capturing this stuff as you go through and build these playgrounds? Are we taking like video footage of what it looks like initially throughout the process or, or? I, I just, it, it would be nice to share these out with the community to show them, here's what we started with, here's what it, what it ended up in.
Absolutely. I mean, I have, uh, a good folder of existing photos, all digital, of course, nowadays. Um, and I will take lots of photos and site visit notes as the project goes on, as, as project, you know, architect. So, um, I could definitely share that at the end.
Okay.
Uh, I could definitely do the same thing with Curva too, got, you know, a pile of pictures.
Right.
Is anything interesting, you know, nowadays? It's a snap of your bone.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a great study of construction.
Yeah, and I, I think the, the pictures tell a story, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the playgrounds? All right, we will move to, thank you. We will move to field trips for committee approval.
Good evening once again. Tonight before you have two field trips. Uh, both are for Shea High School for your consideration. Shea is requesting an out-of-state overnight field trip to the World Kid Wind Challenge in Minneapolis Convention Center in Minneapolis, Minnesota, from May fifth to May eighth of this year, twenty twenty-four. Be six students and two chaperones. It should be noted that this trip is contingent on the students placing at the state competition uh, on the thirty, twenty-third of March. They haven't yet won that competition, but if and when they do win that competition, movement to secure travel for this field trip happens very quickly. There are also, Shea High School is also looking, I, I'll read that one first. At the national level, the students will compete and present design and detail their knowledge and understanding of wind turbines and offshore construction. Students build, practice and display teamwork, collaboration and co- competition and communication skills in a high-stakes environment. This trip is, again, contingent that Shea students place at the state competition on March twenty-third. The school committee approved this trip for the students last year, and last year, the North Kingstown Chamber secured funding from the sponsors to pay for the trip, which I believe is the intention this year as well. We're also looking for approval for Shea High School to attend the Big E New England First Tech Challenge Invitational in Springfield, Massachusetts on May, on April fifth at six thirty AM to eight PM for ten students and two chaperones. And students will, there will compete in a New England-wide robotics competition showcasing collaboration, communication and team-building skills. We're seeking for approval for both of these trips.
Motion to approve the field trips as outlined by Assistant Superintendent Ramsey by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Carney. Discussion on the field trips.
I'd like to make one correction, please. And the funding, the financial, career and technical engineering categorical is paying for trip number one.
And what's the mode of transportation to the Big E for ten students and two chaperones?
Uh, they would take a bus.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to approve the field trips. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call on the approval, please.
Ms. Benolo.
Yeah.
Ms. Carney. Mr. Shalow.
Yeah.
Ms. Doobie. Ms. Fernandez. Ms. Grant. Mr. Chavino.
Yes. All right, we will move into the discussion items. Safe and Orderly Schools update.
Good evening. I'm going to have Christina DeBrie co-present the progress that the school, the Safe and Orderly Schools Committee has been making over their meetings. As you know, we have a Safe and Orderly Schools Committee that is comprised of members of the Shea Adminis- Administration, uh, Toleman, teachers and administration, central office administration and, uh, and teachers from both Shea and Toleman. We have identified during our meetings root causes. We've identified a needs assessment, and we've been working collaboratively toward that. Uh, we've had three meetings so far, and we have another meeting a week from today. And Christina is going to speak about the identified root causes, uh, that we have been working on addressing.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramsey. Uh, before I report that out, Lisa didn't know I was gonna do this, but, um, don't worry. Um, at the last work session, she did announce to all of you that she was going to be, um, supporting the administration at Toleman High School. So she's been at Toleman for the past week or so, a week and two days. So, um, she has been very well received. Um, in this short time, there has been small improvements, which is very positive. Um, on Friday, she had, well, our administration called for a voluntary faculty meeting on a Friday. So we have about seventy to eighty faculty members at Toleman High School and a, but I would say, I did a rough count and it was about fifty or so teachers who showed up on a Friday voluntary faculty meeting. So, um, I, I think the teachers, um, appreciate what's happening. They understand that you've heard us. They are very appreciative and, uh, we thank Lisa for the past week and two days that, that you've been there. She's been very well received. And, and Nikoya has been in the building as well. So, um, it's definitely made a difference and, and we're very grateful. But, um, at the last school committee meeting, Mrs. Carney, Ms. Carney had mentioned something in regards to, have we asked our students what's going on? Why are they skipping classes? So I did some questioning. Um, I contacted the rest of the teachers on the Safe and Orderly Schools Committee. Um, and they did some questioning. I'm just gonna read off just a sample of what we're getting in response. So why are you cutting class? What's going on? Um, well, before I read off the responses, a lot of times we'll get the, the shrug. You know, they feel a little uncomfortable at times, but once we do some prodding, this, this, these were some of the responses. My class is boring. Nothing's going to happen if I get caught. We don't have a teacher. All year, it's been a different sub. I don't like the teacher. I need to charge my phone and the basement bubbler has a plug. Well, miss, I have a sub every day for this class and I don't see the point. To be honest, I really don't feel like dealing with her today. I only come to school because I have to and I wanna hang out with my friends. I can't watch videos on my phone in class. I'm cutting so I can make a TikTok video. What is there to do in advisory anyway? An advisory, I don't know if you're familiar with what an advisory is. Well, I'm seeing some, yes, so I'm not gonna explain what advisory is. Um, I don't wanna hear the teachers talk. I don't like going to class while everyone else is skipping. I get anxiety in a large class. I don't wanna be in the cafeteria. I need a break from class and I need to take a breather. So there's, I think, a combination of a whole bunch of things going on. So those were the responses that we received.
So with that information, coupled with things that the administration and both central office and building-level administration and their teachers, they're very committed, um, people around the table at the Safe and Orderly Schools Committee, and they have some great ideas. So coupled with that, we have begun prioritizing our efforts. We know that we have to prioritize what we need to do to make impactful changes in the school in terms of culture and climate. So we've done some very minor things at Toleman and it's showing a couple of positive effects, but it goes deeper than those positive effects. So Christina, do you wanna talk about some of the ones that we've?
Um, so I'm just gonna speak about three in particular. Uh, one is we are exploring several learning, alternative learning programs for students who need, um, a different kind of learning environment. Uh, we are looking at an electronic hall pass for the students, and then we are creating a high school disciplinary hearing committee.
So with those things, we are going to present to superintendent, who's been a part of our committee, uh, at least once or twice, she's been able to attend, and we need to bring all those forward, identify funding sources, ultimate costs for, the phrase of the committee is immediate-ish, right? We wanna do this immediately, but immediately has a tomorrow impact. Immediate-ish has a couple of days out, so we can plan it and execute it appropriately. So that's where we stand at Safe and Orderly.
Question? All right, Ms. Doobie, Ms. County, Ms. Grant.
So, um, thank you so much for sharing and for putting this on the agenda so that we can continue to hear about this. I, I do hope that we as a district can move to the point where what we're hearing, which is teachers, building administration and district administration collaborating to come up with strategies that work within the building, doesn't have to be something that happens because teachers come to us and say, we're struggling, we're feeling like, you know, we're overwhelmed and we don't know what to do. I, I think that we know we have a lot of challenges in our district. Not just our district. We know that across the country, across the state, we have a lot of challenges right now with education. This isn't a unique to Pawtucket. It isn't a unique to Toleman. It isn't unique to the, wherever the, the teachers are came from. I mean, I know that that's where they were from today. I just think that the teachers who are in the classrooms feeling overwhelmed, maybe the administrators who are feeling like they're not really sure what to do, and the district administrators who have ideas about what to do, if they're at the table together, I think that everyone feels heard and strategies are arrived at, and there's buy-in on all levels. And I think that, I, I think that should be the norm. It shouldn't be reactionary, what happens when we're in a crisis mode. It should be, this is our normal operating procedure, and yeah, we have one meeting at this school and a couple of teachers come, and there's really not a lot that's really said. So clearly, maybe that school just needs a couple bi-annual meetings. This school, we have so many teachers who wanna come and there's such an interest, and there's such a need that we have meetings every week, or we have meetings once a month, but it seems like there is a need and I don't want us to have to have school after school have teachers come for us to say, oh, we need this at the middle school level. Oh, we need this at barrier. Oh, we need this here. If, if instead we're coming up with these strategies in advance, so I hope that this can serve as a model. Every school isn't the same and every school's Safe and Orderly Schools, commit, schools, Safe and Orderly School Committee isn't going to look the same, I think, but I, I like the collaboration that I'm hearing.
Ms. Carney.
Mr. Bried, I thank you for taking the initiative to ask students, and there are certainly a variety of answers that I'm not surprised that most of them coming from teenagers. Um, so with that, so with that, thank you. Um, and what we can do things about, about, you know, students saying, well, the class isn't engaging, the class is boring. It's not that we're there to entertain kids, but it is our job and our responsibility to make the education come to life for them in the classroom, to make the learning engaging, um, to make it hands-on, to give them opportunities to, for teachers to be facilitators of learning and not just standing, you know, at the front, just talking at kids. So for those pieces, I would like us to, I know Dr. Tate has done some great work and continuing to work with making sure that when we look at what is considered hands-on, grade-level-appropriate, challenging, rigorous, thought-provoking curriculum, that we do continue to move in that direction for our students. Um, I do have a lot of questions about, what is the, the hearing committee? I don't know, I don't know what you would call it.
Disciplinary hearing.
All right.
For the high school.
Right, so do you have plans on what that might look like yet, or is that more to come? Let's see it together.
There's more to come on that. Um, Mrs. Carney.
Can I put my normal two cents in and ask for a student representative on those hearing, on those? If appropriate, if it's not, I, I don't know what it looks like now. I understand respecting student privacy, but I would like a student on some sort of committee that's going to be shaping their school. I mean, it's something that we talk about with report cards, with parents, you know, that we want all stakeholders to be involved. And if, if all stakeholders are not involved in some way, shape or form, I just don't know how that's gonna be representative of, like a long-term maintenance problem.
So yeah, the, the short answer is yes, we will include students. Is that the only? I personally, I, I kinda nodded off to the superintendent and she said, yes, um, that would be okay. I, I worry that that is the, the body that is going to make decisions, right? So I think that might not be, but this whole, maybe we start bringing them to the Safe and Orderly, or we start bringing them to, to make these influential programmatic decisions rather than the individual student.
And that's whoever they might be, but.
So get them involved somehow.
If we want our students to be a part of the solution, we have to include them.
Agreed.
And they have to have some accountability and some ownership and understand that this is their school. They come here to learn and to socialize and to have all of those well-rounded benefits of school. But they have to have, for them to own this as well, they have to be part of that. So thank you.
Ms. Grant.
So when this all first started, um, the teachers came to us in regards to Shea. And then the teachers came to us in regards to Toleman. So now we have Ms. Ramsey at Toleman and Ms. Rabbit at Shea. And what I seem to be seeing is Ms. Ramsey and a representative from Tolman, but I'm not seeing Ms. Rabbit and a representative from Shea. And the, the things that they have, because I'm assuming they're, the issues are not exactly the same at each school. So I'm wondering what has come out of Shea this past week since Ms. Ms. Rabbit's been there? Um, because I would assume we would get a rapport on the whole picture. And if you ask me, that my perception is what's coming back to us is just on Tolman. In the past couple of weeks, I have been in the schools. I visited Shea and I visited Tolman. Um, two very different schools. Um, went to Tolman, very chaotic. Kids everywhere, lunchtime, forget it. The stores open, got to get our juice box. Aramark doesn't have it. But, but but I, those are things we need to also be focusing on. You know, you know, all these kids going to the, the store at, um, lunchtime and you know, in our policies and procedures, we have a wellness committee. We shouldn't be selling juice boxes at lunchtime. We have a wellness committee. Um, it's against our welcome, um, our wellness. So I, I'm, I, I, I'm just not. I guess me, i- it's nice to see some of this coming back, but, but there is a lot there. And some of this stuff just to needs, seems to be very surface. And, you know, we went to Shea and, you know, there was a student in the hallway with his telephone. And the assistant principal said, what are you doing? So the kid walks into the classroom. I'm like, what, what are you doing? The kid went, then went into the classroom and there's a class going on. And it was a substitute and then that was it. He looked in the, in the room and he said, oh, it's all set. He's off the phone now. These are, these are the things we need to be looking at. Uh, the, the student, you know, if people are going to be coming to us and talking to us about about classes being disruptive, kids in the car, that kids not going to, um, classrooms, then we really need to get, we, we really need to stop acting on it. I know we can do a plan, but why wasn't that student taken down to the office? Why wasn't, you know, there are a lot more things we need to do. And the stuff needs to stop happening. If substitutes are in these classrooms, they're not babysitters, they're teachers, they're very well-educated people. They might be, they might be, um, retired, but it doesn't make them inadequate. And if we need to make it known in our district, if you want to be a substitute, then you need to come in and work. Our students need to learn because our students do deserve more. But you know what? We come in here, we blame you, we blame you, we blame you. You know what? It's all of our faults. It really is. And we all need to start working together and stop pointing at this one and pointing at this one because it is our responsibility to help these students. And you know what? We're not helping a student when we let him go into a classroom. Next week, if someone saw that or if it wasn't a substitute, a teacher from Shea would come next week. But when I, when I see on our agenda, Safe and Orderly Schools update, I expect an update from Shea and Tolman about what's taking place, what's happening, what are we doing to make these things happen? Because you know what? These kids need action now. These teachers need support now. We need this stuff to be done now and it needs to stop. It needs to stop. The phone calls need to stop. You know what? Ms. Doobie had brought it up before. Maybe we need to push that a little bit harder. You know, parents can call the front desk, teachers, their families can call the front desk. If kids are, you know, people are walking around the schools with these little white things in their ears, like it's like it's, it's a great thing to do. It shouldn't be happening. School is a place to learn. And I have no problem with people coming with us complaints, but we need to act on this. This isn't new stuff. This stuff has been happening for years and we all know it. So we really need to stop being, we need to start seeing things taking place. Some of this stuff more immediately and more quicker. And I would love to have Ms. Rabbit come up and tell us what's taking place at Shea this week. What safety situations have taken there? Isn't that what the point of having these two administrators in that school? Because the problems are not the same.
I just want to make one clarifying point. The Safe and Orderly Schools Committee update is a district committee. It was not and is not specific. We are not here specific for Tolman. We are here for the Safe and Orderly Schools Committee update. However, if you would like to have a Tolman update and a Shea update in addition to the Safe and Orderly Schools update, I have no problem, neither of us do, um, to, to do that specifically, but I believe we were charged with the Safe and Orderly Schools update with, there's a collective group.
Things are different at each school. So as I appreciate Mr. Preet stepping up, working with you on this, there should also be a representative from Shea up there because the problems, there are different problems in two different extents. Like I said, when I went to Shea, there was that gentleman, there were a couple of kids in the hallway. But when I went to Tolman, it was like I walked into the mall on a Friday night. Everyone was just every place and, you know, so, but both these schools have problems. Because teachers, let me finish Mr. Shabano, teachers from both schools have come in front of us. So if we're going to get to the bottom of this, then we need representatives from both schools. And we need to figure this out sooner than later. We, this is the second time you've come in front of us and talked about the electronic tab thing. So, okay, so maybe we'll order it next week. Then it'll take six months for it to come in. We need things that are going to help these students and teachers a little bit quicker. So how do we do that?
So Ms. Grant, I, I appreciate your passion for this issue. The Safe and Orderly Schools update is an item that I am placing on every agenda going forward so that we can get an update just like we did now on the Safe and Orderly Schools Group Committee that oversees the entire district. The superintendent has asked me to place as a standing agenda item on every work session going forward, a specific update on Shea from Assistant Su- uh, Assistant Superintendent Rabbit and an update from Tolman on Assistant Superintendent, from Assistant Superintendent Ramsey. The purpose of giving them a month to get into the building, get acclimated, evaluate the process and then present to us at the end of the month with solutions or findings or, or observations. So we will get a Shea and Tolman specific update at every work session going forward. But at every meeting going forward, we will get an overview of the Safe and Orderly Schools update.
Again, my concern is these are two very different schools. Take a walk through it. The problems are very different. And a school like Shea might not need something like that, like an electronic tab thing. So when it comes in front of us, if that's the case, it doesn't, it might not have to be consistent in both schools. So we need people from Shea to be able to speak to this stuff also.
Can I just say something? Um, there are Shea teachers on this district committee. And so what will happen is we'll bounce ideas off of one another. This is what's happening Tolman. And, and we're actually hearing from the Shea teachers, even though you're not witnessing it. Oh yeah, we're kind of having the same issues at Shea. So I'm not in, I'm not at Shea. I can only go by what the teachers are telling myself and Ron. They're saying, oh yeah, that's happening in our, in our building as well. So, you know, I'm only here representing, Mrs. Ramsey said, I, I would like to, which I think is the right thing to do. She wanted one of the teachers on the committee to present with her. I volunteered. So we had decided, you know, maybe we'll rotate teachers at the, at the school committee meeting. So this week was me. Next month it may be a teacher from Shea. Do you know what I mean? So I, I don't want you to think that it's just going to be Tolman teachers up here speaking because that won't be the case.
Because my concern is these are two very different schools with two very different problems at certain times. And my impression was if we were going to have two individuals in these schools, then we would receive reports on what was taking place and how things were progressing from both of these.
Get those reports at every work session going forward. The intent was to give both of them time to acclimate to the buildings, to make an assessment, form some observations, have some conversations. The Safe and Orderly Schools Committee oversees Safe and Orderly Schools for the entire district. So I understand that the schools are not, not every school is the same. But if we are talking about Safe and Orderly Schools in the district, that's what this committee is charged in with. Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Ramsey and a Superintendent Rabbit are stationed at both high schools to help facilitate and mitigate some of the incidents we've seen crop, pop up over the last several months. Ms. Fernandez.
I had a question too. I didn't know if it was just Tolman or I, I wasn't sure. So thank you for clarifying that. Um, I agree with, with you. It's two very different schools. I was in, um, the schools this week too. And Shea and Tolman are completely different. However, I don't agree that they're different problems. I think they're the same problems. I think that Shea um, has a better grip on how they're handling those problems. It was really two very, very different experiences I had at, at Tolman and Shea. And it was the same kids. It was really how the, the adults in the school respond to issues and the problems in the kids.
So to your point, Mrs. Fernandez, uh, I would agree with you and every single time we have a Safe and Orderly Schools Committee meeting, we talk about tier, and I mentioned it last time, tier one interventions, tier one responses. They are very similar problems, different ways to handle it, different kids, similar problems. Um, but it's called consistency. It's called procedures. It's called implementation. It's called follow-through. It's called all those things. Um, we have relayed that out to schools, schools need to, I know that Lee and I will work with our schools to ensure that they have those ongoing conversations. The Safe and Orderly Schools, like Mr. Shabano said, is, is district. We're working on some very aggressive and, and forward-thinking solutions to some of the problems that both schools are realizing at this point. Which we'll ob- obviously share next time, once the superintendent is brought up to speed because unfortunately she was not able to attend today's meeting. So, um, we'll bring, uh, superintendent up to speed and be prepared to share out next week.
Mr. Shaw.
Thank you very much. In light of what was discussed today earlier, is there a Safe and Orderly and also district-wide, do you have a team for Jenks, Golf and Slater?
So the Safe and Orderly Schools Committee, uh, was last year began as a secondary initiative. This year with the growing issues seemingly identified and at the secondary schools and the large concentration or the large committee, we wanted to focus it on the high schools right now. It's not to say that what we create and do can't go to the middle schools. But I do know, uh, from my middle school friends that they would like to voice around a table as well. Um, I think that we need to do something and I, we need to do something quickly. So m- middle school can absolutely benefit from the work here and we'll bring them in and how are we going to tweak it? Based on what the middle schools, because middle school students are not high school students, right? They're different, uh, they, their needs are different and their ex- experience is a difference. So we would bring them in. I think we can, we compartmentalized high school so we could be a little bit more quick in our response because it was immediate. And it kind of fell off the bandwagon last year a little bit and it shouldn't have, right? So we'll bring the middle schools onboard. Not to say you've need, now need to do what the high schools have done, but to say this is what the high schools have done. How do, how do you feel as though this works for you and what tweaks or, uh, changes need to be done for those, our middle school children?
And that's why I asked, is there a team? Is, is, is there a golf team, Slater team?
No, there's not a Tolman team or a Shea team either.
Right, but there, there's no team, but I mean, Tol- the Tolman student, uh, teacher body, they're, you know, they, they rallied around and there is a, you know, it's not an official team. They, they rallied around. I think we're going to hear from Golf. Next month we might hear from Slater. Next week, the month after that we might, because I haven't heard much from, um, when it comes to, but I'm sure it's going on in the schools. Haven't heard much about what's going on in this school. Haven't heard much that's going on with Slater. Uh, to Kim's point, are we just ignoring it because the greasy wheel, the, the, you know, isn't being loud over here at the microphone?
Whatever.
I, I just had, and I'm not trying, but, um, to Kim's point, uh, committee member Grant's point, we do have to start doing stuff yesterday. We're, we're behind the eight ball and let's stop blaming people. It's, we gotta go forward, but we know the issues. Let's put some things in place and let's get this done. These schools need to get safe. And it does start, you all know this, you guys are much smarter than I am. It, it all starts in the junior high school because they go up to the, I'm not, I promise I'm not doing it for a campaign speech. I literally, it's, it's facts. It starts at the junior high and goes up to the high school. So I just want to give it out there that let's get a, a team together. Let the junior high schools know, hey, we'll come, we're not ignoring you.
Anything else on Safe and Orderly Schools? Ms. Benala.
Eventually are we going to trickle this down to the elementary schools? Because while they're not as big a problem as we're facing with middle schools and the high schools, they do have segments of issues that need to be addressed. And I think while we're on it, we should bring it forward. So that all our schools are covered by Safe and Orderly Schools.
Yes, this is a district committee. This is a district oversight committee. And while I'm going to not necessarily say that elementaries were on my immediate radar, um, I think that once we start instituting plans and procedures and protocols that are realized, fully conceptualized and realized, then we can expand it out. But we are not, central office team, we speak to schools every day. We speak to the teachers every day. We speak to the administrators every day. We speak and we know what's going on. There is a trend. There's, there's obvious trends. There's things that need a district oversight, different district experiences and diff- a district opportunities. So that is not, not being spoken about, okay? It is actively being spoken about and to filter that out, uh, to the elementaries absolutely, but I mean, unless directed otherwise, I would like to get our secondaries, the middles and the highs, these things that we've been talking about into place and really kind of do that and then move and trickle that back.
So I, I would like to hear a little bit more about this electric pass thing. Wh- why can't? Why can't they just be, uh, a set of procedures for what pertains to a reason for giving a pass out? And then, because either a student's going to have a pass or they're not going to have a pass.
The electronic pass, uh, program that is being investigated right now is something that has the technology to oversee and allow administration and teachers to know who's in the hallway at all times. They, with, with permission or without permission. They have the ability to back-end and control who goes in the hallway at the same time. Because a lot of times students are texting, meet me in the bathroom and whatever happens, right? They text. So last time I was at the podium, I explained that we can pre-control and I think I And I think I used Mrs. Carney as my, as my guinea pig, I apologize. I can use Mrs. Fernandez this time because, you know, we made up. So, um, so Mrs. Fernandez and I, we have an ongoing issue. Um, we don't want to be in class. The administration knows it because every time we're together, we cause a ruckus in the hallways, right? They can restrict us. So if Mrs. Fernandez is in the hallway, I do not have access to get a pass. Because now teachers in all the classrooms, if I'm not in the same classroom, my teacher might give me a pass because I have to go to the restroom. Mrs. Fernandez might have to give a pass to go to the restroom. But if this was pre-programmed in the past, this is just one of the examples, pre-programmed on the backend, it would pop up to the teacher, nope, Lisa can't go right now. Mrs. Fernandez is in the, is, is in the hallway. And when she logs back into classroom, that will release my opportunity. That's one example. Um, we can limit the number of passes. If you're a frequent flyer, Mrs. Grant, and you go to the bathroom every period, right? Unless they're, just to get out of the classroom because you need to take a walk. But I need you there because you're not passing or you're not doing what you need to do. I can restrict the number of passes that are given without, and the teachers will know. Nope, Mrs. Grant's already used her three passes for today when you go on the fifth class and say, I want another pass.
So we heard today from one of the teachers that they're spending a lot of time doing disciplinary notes and and then it causes chaos. But a teacher has to be paying attention to, or someone has to be paying attention to that computer. So that's not going to take a teacher away?
Yes and no.
Their class again?
It's yes and no. So, uh, yes and no that the pass, you can be teaching in the classroom, walking around. Just similar now, I raise my hand, I want to have a pass. I would stop, write a pass, give you the pass, you go. Now, this is electronic, so you would have typed up a pass request on your computer. I would come over to your computer, type in my code. Sorry, come over to my computer, type in my code and it will allow you to go. I don't have to be monitoring my screen. I do not. Uh, because when I went over to type in my code, it would pop up right on that student's computer that I couldn't, that that child couldn't go for some reason. If the child goes AWOL, uh, yep, that would be an opportunity for you to say, Mrs. Carney asked to go to the, uh, to the lab, I said no, she said, I'm out of here, got up and left, right? That already prompts a call to the main office anyway. So you're already taking a moment. This would be, you put it on the system so anybody in the hall would know that Mrs. Carney's in the hallway without a pass. It, it, it's, it gives a much smoother, better system of communication for all those who are involved and responsible for monitoring the student movement throughout the day. And it also gives you incredible data to be able to meet with the parents, meet with the, the, the people in charge of the students and, and see why they're not passing. You can meet with the parents, listen, she's asked for a pass every class, every period, every day.
Okay, we've spent a ton of time talking about the electronic hall pass. But the, the groups of students that you're referring to, Mr. Preet, are those students out in the hall with hall passes? The, the ten or fifteen students down in the cafeteria all have a hall pass?
Right, you have a very valid point. No, they're not. These are the kids that are not coming to class, period.
Thank you. Ms. Dubey?
So I just want to thank you again. I think that, um, ultimately, I think if you have the teacher voice, the administrator voice, and I do agree, student voice at the table, that you're going to come up with ideas that you feel are going to work in your schools. And that I'm not in your schools and I don't see the day-to-day. I know what might work at Johnson and Wales, I don't know what's going to work, um, at Tolman and Shea. And I think that sometimes you may try something and say, this wasn't the solution we needed. But I think that that is most of education as it is. Trying things, trying out strategies, making sure that everyone has buy-in. And you put full effort into it and then saying, actually, this wasn't what we needed because that wasn't, um, necessarily the problem. If you're looking at the root causes and then you're saying, okay, what will address those root causes? I, I am glad that you're coming up with different ideas and I, I hope that they're successful and that, um, that buy-in that comes from having all the right voice at the table, um, works. And I, I think that, um, it's high time that we have it, you know, that kind of approach in all of our schools, um, moving forward.
Anything else? Thank you both. All right, we will go into the discussion, uh, Varia Elementary School Playground Update, Ms. Benolo.
So during the past few months, I have been working with, um, some of the people over in the planning department, um, on a couple of projects that the city, um, is working on in the schools. And I've asked them to bring it forward to us so we can be informed. These projects are fully funded by the city. Um, and in the case of Varia, Varia will continue to be under the care and maintenance of the City of Potucky, correct?
Yes.
And so we have Mike Wilcox with us right now, as well as Mr. Garrish. Um, and they will explain what is happening with the Varia playground this summer.
Yeah, so as Joanne mentioned, um, Varia School is under the control of the city. It is a, uh, city maintained, uh, playground. Um, one of the things that has been happening there over the last couple of years with a lot of the heavy rain events we get, um, the playground surfacing, which is a wood flybar surface, gets washed out. And I think we've re- uh, replenished that probably three or four times in the last couple of years. Um, one of the things we're planning is to redo the surface with the rubber ice surface. Kind of raise it rate a little bit, divert some of the water that's going into it and have a stabilized surface that won't be washed out. We hired Tim Garrish to do all the design work. Um, he's starting to put the, uh, contract documents together. As Joanne mentioned, we're hopeful to get this under construction this summer.
What's the funding source for this, Mike?
Uh, CDBG. Yeah, we have a, uh, three hundred thousand dollar grant to do this project.
Ms. Grant?
Will it be done by the start of school?
It's about a two-month project. Yeah. So, um, so we got to get this on the street and bid it and get a contract going forward. Um, not a lot of materials to, to buy here. A lot of this stuff we've already kind of pre-bought, some of the, one of the playground equipment pieces where we replaced them. Um, we should have that about a month.
It's a CB, CDBG grant.
Yep.
The next time we see you is likely that be going over a finished product? Like, we don't have any involvement in the procurement of you're, you're going out to the street for a bid for a construction and any of that stuff? All of that handled? Ms. Benolo.
So one more question for Tim, um, uh, Mike. Um, will you be putting up a sign on the playground that says what the hours of use are?
Actually, we cannot.
You can't?
No, I, I was told today that it's a, uh, city playground open to city residents. Um, yeah. Yeah, I was kind of hopeful that we could, but, uh, but I was informed that we can't.
Okay.
Anything else on Varia? Move to Slater, Middle School Physical Education Lot Update, Ms. Benolo.
So on the Slater, it's also a CDBG grant. Um, it's fully funded by the city. However, um, once the process is complete, it remains under the care and control of the school committee, the school district. Uh, what has happened is we have, there is a seventy-three by hundred and two lot approximately. Um, and it's dirt. And when it rains, it's mud and that's where the kids have PE. Uh, we've tried to, and the city has tried to put grass in there. And each time it has failed. So right now we're looking toward turf, um, and some trees. And Mr. Garrish will explain what we're doing, either one of you.
Yeah, so this is a commercial-grade, um, non-sports turf, uh, that we're proposing, uh, price competitive, right? Uh, with some infill in it, so we'll have a shock in it and we'll have a pad underneath, so it's still shock absorbing, but not to the same level as a sports field where we're, we're necessarily measuring for concussions and et cetera. Uh, it also will work well with any type of stormwater that would filter through. We're going to put some drainage in, uh, to help capture some water in the way as well. It is, it is a nice rectangle for a, a sports field or a sports area, though small. Uh, and this is actually an example of one that's of similar size, uh, up in Massachusetts. Uh, so we're going to mark it with, uh, synthetic turf, not paint it on the, on the turf. The lines for a soccer pitch because we have communication with the physical education teacher. Address that. And then we're going to do an infield as well, but not the dark brown skin area. So it'll be marked for, you know, so they could do.
Baseball and soccer.
They can do baseball or, or, uh, you know, right, baseball, softer.
Anything on Slater? All right, thank you both very much. All right, uh, monthly vendor report, budget transfer report, July first, twenty twenty-four to present or enrollment report? Anyone have any comments or, Ms. Grant?
I've noticed the past couple of months when we've looked at this report, like, there's nothing from like Home Depot on here. And, and what I mean.
What reported, the vendor payment report?
Yeah, like, like, don't we have a, like, don't our people go out and, I mean, it's, go out and, I'm assuming you would have in town, uh, Home Depot to fix things and things like that. I'm just wondering, where do we, I, I don't see many things on here that have to do with, um,
Yeah, and I think, I, I, I think to your point, Ms. Grant, it's been, uh, I, I think fairly well-known amongst the committee that the business office has been, uh, to say short-staffed would be an understatement. Um, I, I think, you know, we've, we've brought in a fi- financial consultant who's met within the district at least a few times with the superintendent to try and pull these, these funds down from the, the umbrella fund and, and put it, put them into their right, um, classifications. I think a lot of that goes towards paying these vendors timely, the Home Depots, the Lowe's. I, I see Tessie is on here for a payment. Um, but I think as we start unpacking that, and again, I, I'll caution the committee that the finances in the, in the school district are in rough shape currently. There's a, there's a bit of, there's a lack of staff, there's a lack of bodies. And while we're confident that, that the, the money is intact, we need those professionals to be able to pull those grant funds, those, those buckets of state aid, re- uh, replenish the capital reserve fund with, with monies that have been earmarked by this committee. Um, so that's a, that's a continuous work in progress. But that didn't happen from January first to now. This has been a, a long process. And if anybody thinks we're going to unwind it all and, and put it back together within the next month or so, I think the sl- chances of that are slim and none. Um, so, you know, I, I'm happy to see that, that Tessie has, has been paid. I, I, I can inquire specifically of Lowe's and Home Depot, or if anyone else has specific vendors, you can certainly email the clerk. But this, so, this is, this is a serious problem and it, and it's, it's one that, that manifests itself over a, a year's period of time. Um, so. Yes.
I have another question. Uh, is anyone here to be able to answer? Do we have any vendors that are telling us what they're not going to supply us? They're not going to service us because we're so far behind on our bills?
Yeah, I, I believe there are, I believe we've gotten notices. I believe the committees, well, some of the committee's been aware of those notices. Some of you have brought those notices to me. Um, so.
Okay. So if we wanted to do certain, but what I'm thinking about is, is there any in-the-classroom, um, vendors? Is there anything that we can't get? Let's bring it down to pencils and paper. Uh, no, we're not going to give it to the City of Potucky because you're so far behind on your bills. Do we, do we know if there's day-to-day operations, Lowe's and Home Depot is day-to-day? But I'm talking about Monday through Friday in the classroom, science class, English class. Uh, are we behind on our bills so much that it's been affected in that way? Is anyone here to be able to answer that? I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
I don't, I don't know that there's, I don't know that there's anybody here to answer it. Um, you know, I, I will tell you, a couple of the accounts that I've looked into at committee members' requests have been shut off since June, August, September, you know? And, and, you know, while I appreciate everybody's, you know, let's get this, let's get this fixed and, 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 and work this problem. None of this was discussed until I asked for the capital reserve and the medical reserve balance in January. So, you know, I, I, I think we're, we're working the problem as quickly as, as possible. Um, but, you know, uh, there's, there's a posting for a new chief financial officer on school spring as well. So we're, we're, we're challenged in some regards. Ms. Fernandez, go ahead.
I, I just, um, have a question about the, the vendor payments. Um, it's just not even really a question, just a comment about the amount of money that we pay other districts. Um, and I'm just wondering if there's a plan for us to look at that at some point. And I'm not talking about like the, you know, the, um, not talking about the alternative schools. I'm talking about other cities and towns that are educating our kids. And I'm just hoping that we can look at that. There's a, a lot and each month there is a lot of money leaving here. And, um, I think that we have some good programs, especially at Shea. So I'm wondering why, um, we're, we're paying for kids to go to all these other districts. So just wondering, maybe we could look at that at some point. It's a whole lot of money.
Just quickly, um, I started looking at that because we're getting ready, we're in the middle of the budget season as we speak. Um, and looking at funding, we do have a lot of money going outside of our district. And as I'm visiting schools, especially with Kim and I show, um, I am talking to a lot of students, especially our secondary kids and asking them. And like when I was attending the football games, I was asking students, you know, because I met a lot of students that Davies evidently is a very popular spot, just for example. And talking to the students, a lot of the students say, I will stay here. But my parents think that the aesthetics of the building looks way better than our building look. So that was one of the main reasons, not to say they didn't want to be. But the parents, you know, you pull up and I've never seen Davies. I said, I want to go see how Davies look because I see the look. But they're not even talking about what's going on inside the building, they're just talking about the outside of the building. So I think once our high schools, um, renovations are happening and the new high school erected, I think that will make huge difference and bring a lot of our students back. And I know, just to add, our CTE programs did some, um, renewed, um, I guess promotions and we're bringing in some different things for our students of high interest. So I'm looking at bringing some more students back to our district even starting next year as a result of a CTE program, making some different decisions for our students for next year.
Ms. Benolo.
Um, back to the um, outstanding bills. Um, can we get a printout of what we owe people?
I'll, I'll go back to, it's, it's a question of getting the bodies in there to be able to produce the work. We're, we're getting a financial consultant to come down on the weekends for four, five, six hours at a clip. And the immediate need is to allocate the, the funds correctly so that the city and the schools, we, we work on, the city holds the cash. So our, our financial house has to be in order to not negatively impact the city operations.
I understand that. And so I'm saying at some point in time.
Yeah.
Can we get a list? Can we get a list of who's outstanding? And on the second question is, I know we have a purchasing agent now. How many purchases are being held up because of the unknown amount of money that we have? Um, that's something I'd like to look into because I know at one point it was short on toilet paper and paper towels, and we have those now. But, um, I'd like to see what other things are being held.
Ms. Liz, you have both of those requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Uh, nothing on any of the other, uh, budget transfers, the enrollment report? Everybody's good? Superintendent's update, Superintendent Royal.
Good evening again, uh, just a couple of updates this evening. Um, first of all, I held, um, our student, my student advisory council just on March eleventh. I invited ten students initially, one student did come, um, she's from Shea High, I mean, sorry, Tolman High School. Um, amazing student, I may add, one of the leaders in the school. She also shared with me that the student council want to participate and be a part of the team. So we scheduled the next one with her input on Monday, April twenty-second at four, four PM. It'll be Google Meet, um, because we know that some students get home and they can just jump on their phone or, or, or the computer at the house. But, um, she's very excited. She said that she was going back to share the news because she didn't, the students didn't quite know, like, the superintendent wanna talk to us? Is that a good thing? So once she knew, oh, you just want our input, you just want what we want in our school, you wanna talk to us? So she was very excited. She said, oh, next time, Ms. Royal, I'm gonna have way more students than we have now. Um, so teachers, leaders, please share, invite. Um, Ariel has been very instrumental in helping me put this committee together and get the word out. So we're gonna continue to have the meetings and hopefully build that team as well. In addition, I also have the, uh, my parent advisory committee meeting that is coming up on this Thursday at five PM, it'll be held via Zoom. Again, it is to hear from our parents, what they want from our schools, what they feel the needs are, and just to hear, um, their perspectives in how can we become better partners in educating our students together? So I'm looking forward to that meeting. Also, I'm excited to announce coming soon, our superintendent's family and community night at Gulf Middle School at six PM on March twentieth, so I hope to see you all there. And then also, March twenty-eighth is our district-wide parent-teacher conference night for pre-K through twelve-grade students. So parents, parents, caregivers, grandmamas, whoever you are, please sign up. Um, we need to have some conversation with you about how we can work together to better meet the needs of your students in school. So we wanna continue to partner with you in this work and educating our students together. Last but not least, April sixth is our Pawtucket CTE Career Fair at Jinx Middle School from ten AM to two PM. It is open to all students and families in Pawtucket. Over sixty companies will be in attendance to talk about career paths and opportunities. So please spread the word, spread the news, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Committee updates, Ms. Connie.
Uh, thank you to everyone in your collaborative efforts for making sure that this, the health, the safe and orderly schools are front and foremost. Um, I would like to say, I, I did hear one thing, I wanted to start with something positive, but there was a comment made earlier today, and I wrote down that there were some students that are not able to learn. That was made earlier this evening, and I'm hoping that that was, um, that person misspoke and that that is not the belief of some of the staff in our schools, that some students are not able to learn. So I just wanna close the night by saying that, you know, that was disappointing. I also don't like reading, uh, in the newspaper, articles talking about our kids in negative ways and our staff and our administration. I also am Pawtucket proud. I also was born here, went to school here, taught here. And that is not how I like to see my schools or my secondary schools put into the public. I, we want to highlight the great things that are happening. A lot of schools around the state have struggles. I would like us to see, take a different approach in how we publicly talk about our schools. Um, we want our students to come to our secondary schools. We are proud of our schools, we are proud of our teachers, we are all educators here. Um, and we will not be able to maintain the excitement and the morale in our schools if this is the way that we publicly talk about them and our kids. So moving forward, I hope to see some dramatic changes in our mindset um, and the way that we talk about kids and our families.
Ms. Banolo.
Um, just an update on what happened at our last wellness meeting. Uh, we did talk about hydroponics and the use at Shea, but there are two to three other, um, hydroponic units that are, um, they're looking at plans to use them in other schools, if not use them all in Shea. Um, Aramoc in the school department is working on a allergen transmittal for Aramoc. So they can better serve our students that have allergies. Um, the menstrual dispensers that we have in all of our schools, by the beginning of September, they will all be full. And there will be a system in place to keep them maintained and updated, and that's state law. And we would like to continue to meet state law. Um, let's see, CEP, thanks to Erin Dubey and the administration. All our students will have free or reduced lunch, free lunch, all year, next year. So that is the CEP program that'll be put in place. Um, there's a community cleanup at the Baldwin Loop on April twentieth. And the empowerment factory is having their tenth anniversary celebration on May twenty-second. Um, Dwayne Nanda said that some kids have a hard time coming back from school, coming back from breaks, but they're expecting it and they're there to help them. Um, Kathy Kando from, um, Little, um, has requested that we implement a TB policy. And Erin in the policy committee is working on that. Um, and finally, the backpackers, which is where I volunteer. Um, we've got tri- um, volunteers from AAA Coastal One Fogarty Center and Bradley students. And the backpackers have given out eleven thousand bags to students in the past four months, sixty thousand pounds of food. Um, and we also have support from community health worker associations, um. And next month, March twenty-fifth, actually, that's this month, uh, we will have Dr. Passion from Bradley, and she will be informing us on trauma-informed classrooms. And that's it, we'd like, like you all to come, join us.
Ms. Fernandez.
I, uh, I don't really have, I don't have anything, anything, thank you, good night.
Mr. Shaw.
Uh, Joanne did a join us executive report I was gonna give again. So with that, I'm, I'm all set, thank you, Chairman.
Ms. Grant. Ms. Dubey.
Okay, um, so I just wanna clarify the CEP schools, um, but, because I think Ms. Banolo made it sound like this is, you know, we already did it. Um, uh, this is, uh, this will be something that will be discussed, um, probably in April. Um, essentially, the state, the federal government and the state have said that the funds in your nutrition fund, which is our enterprise fund, which we have used in the past to pay off school lunch debt, are also going to be able to be used to pay off any potential loss. And this will all be explained in more detail, any potential loss moving to CEP would generate. So we have the funds in the nutrition fund account to cover those losses, which means that without any effect to our general fund budget, without any budgetary effect or money expended from this, um, committee, wh- which, uh, oversees that budget, we will be able to move to CEP. And that provision is, um, RIDE has told us will not be going away. As in that, that nutrition fund can continue to be used, and they are encouraging school districts, two school districts, um, Wunsaka and West Warwick, both were able to get, actually, they shifted on January first, um, using the same provision. So we will be able to shift next year. Um, the superintendent, I know, has already indicated, RIDE will be communicating with districts in April. And then anything would be obviously presented to this committee, um, to move forward with. But that was, um, what, uh, Ms. Banolo shared, um. So I just want to, um, highlight that we did have our Women's History Month, uh, celebration. Uh, we had students from all of our schools, uh, essay winners from our elementary and middle schools, and also our three high school representatives. Those high school representatives were able to go to a legislative day. They spent the entire day at the State House. They met, um, uh, state officials, as well as having a luncheon with our, um, our women delegation from Pawtucket. It was, um, thank you to, uh, Sandra Kano and Karen Alzate, our state senator and state rep from Pawtucket. So I thank them for working, um, with me. I thank Ms. Rabbit, who always helps, um, coordinate this with me to ensure that we continue to mark Women's History Month and International Women's Day in Pawtucket. It was a wonderful celebration, and, uh, it was a packed house with, um, all of the parents who came and watched their students get, um, a little award, so it was really nice.
Thank you, all right, I don't have anything either. Good night, everyone. Motion adjourned by Ms. Grant, seconded by Ms. Connie, Ms. Banolo, any discussion? All those in favor, I oppose, motion carries unanimously. Good night, everyone.